When we started talking about doing, you know, doing something with the green 12 Scottsdale, I think David gave us a number, he said, you know, the worst-case scenario, I mean, if we had to totally rebuild the green and we ran into rock and all that stuff, it would be like eighty grand, eighty to a hundred, I think, was the number. So we got it done for less than that, and I think, I think it'll be playable, so I guess we dodged another bullet.
Yeah, they were very cognizant to make sure that they do it in, you know, a cost-effective manner.
Excuse me, I'm disappointed that we did anything at all, because I like the old green. But, but bending over for the golfers, I will, and this is, I think this is just another indication that we're, we're trying our best to, to keep people satisfied, if you will. Thank you.
One more question for David. What is the verdict on the greens, all fourteen of them that have been reseeded or re-sprayed?
Actually, we did thirteen.
Thirteen of them?
I was out looking at them yesterday, and they all look really pretty good. I'm guessing right now that, hoping, even though we're still not going to open until September first, I think we're about a week ahead in our growth schedule, because they really are coming in that, that well right now. So I'm, I'm very pleased with what Kyle and Keith and his crew have been doing out there. They've been busting their buns out there, trying to get those things ready, and I think we'll be in better shape than we were the last time. We're going to have more time to grow those greens in before we go into winter, so they should be healthier, better rooted. They look good right now. I was out yesterday, like I said, looking at them. I was out about seven or eight days ago, and they've grown tremendously in just seven or eight days.
And just, just to let everybody know, we airified the greens that we did not sprig last week, and when you airify from a distance, it looks like something's gone wrong with the green, and we received a number of calls, and they're fine. And this coming week, we're going to airify the thirteen that we sprigged, so they'll look rough again, but this helps them long-term grow, so forth. So just, and we're going to include that in the newsletter, so that people don't think that a actual problem is occurring, but it's, we're airfying and top dressing, and so if you look from an angle, they're going to look bad, but that's how you improve the quality and the health of the green. Correct, David?
That's correct.
And then finally, in spite of Bruce's comments, do you feel the green will have more putting positions, twelve?
Instead of having only two, maybe three pin positions on number twelve, we probably have seven or eight now. And I know there's going to be certain people that won't like the, the new green, but it will speed up play-through there, I think, because people should be able to putt it without, play it without putting, foreputting as often as they used to, have a chance to get it up and down. Sure, it's a, it's a change, but as fast as, as that green is, and we all remember number seven, which is pretty much like this, we can still play number seven. It's, it's a good green, but it didn't have nearly the slope that number twelve had. Twelve had a little bit more than five feet of fall from the back of the green to the front of the green as it used to exist. And that's way too much.
The temporary chair recognizes Mr. Lloyd. You want to comment?
Yes, I just, I can question, yes, I'm cool. Pardon? Sorry. Okay. This is for an additional fifty thousand dollars, is that correct, Tom? Or is this, the fifty thousand dollars is going to cover the total expenditures?
That's the expenditure, the expenditure is in the P and L right now, under expenses.
Okay.
So it'll be moved over from there, or we're proposing it moved over from there to capital expenditure.
Okay.
But the work's already been done.
Right, right. Okay, good.
Any other comments from the board members? Okay, then let's move on to the next agenda. We're in the number three, trail license and trail maintenance agreements. Doug?
Yeah, so there's two, two agreements here for consideration that, by the board. As you know, we've, we've worked over the last several months with Northwest Arkansas Trailblazers, and they're, they've worked in turn with the Walton Family Foundation to secure funding for an additional forty to forty-five miles of trails in the central part of the, of the city. The east side has been completed, the trails there have been used extensively by the membership, and we're happy to see that. But they have secured money from the Walton Family Foundation and installed a second set, the, the middle trails, we'll call them, I guess. And so we're proposing this license agreement, which is essentially the same as what was entered the first time for the back forty on the, on the east side trails. It's essentially the same agreement that we entered into for that. And then also, the second agreement is the trails maintenance agreement, which is a tri-party agreement, or a agreement between the city and the P O A to provide funding for maintenance of, of all of the trails. And you see there that it's a seventy thousand dollar agreement, thirty-five thousand dollars will be provided by the city, and thirty-five thousand by the P O A.
Once this is voted upon, then soon after, the city will also vote, and so both entities will have voted. I think it's their, beginning of August, the city is going to vote on this. So we'll, we'll do our part, they'll do their part, and then it will be official.
And if we don't concur, if the city doesn't concur with us, what happens?
We've, Doug was working with the city attorney and with Northwest Trailblazers in developing these agreements. I would be surprised if they don't approve it. If they throw us a curveball and reject it, then we'll have to regroup at that point.
I'm guessing that we thank the Walton Family Foundation and the Trailblazers for their commitment to the central part of Bella Vista.
This, this is tremendous for us.
Oh, absolutely.
If you remember that they spent, oh, three million dollars, maybe a little bit more, on the, on the east side, and they're spending almost seven million dollars in the central area. They're doing, putting in more tunneling, so you don't have to go through the road. So this is, you know, tremendous, and I encourage the board and our residents to read the economic impact study that is on the Walton Family Foundation website, which shows the true impact of what these trails are bringing to our area.
And then at the bottom of that page, it requests an action today or not?
No action today, we'll, I'm sorry, that's, that's for next week.
Okay.
Another question. This is a total expenditure amendment on the city's party and our part of thirty-five thousand, is that correct, for the entire trail system?
An additional.
An addition, so it's thirty-five dollars, thirty-five thousand for the east side trails, and then an additional for the central trails?
Correct.
Okay.
And as Joan indicated in previous conversations, we, we think it'll be, you know, we probably won't have this expense in nineteen, because the trails will be under construction, or may have part of the expense in nineteen. So it probably won't kick in until twenty.
Okay, and then there's a, is there, is there a third phase?
That's down the road, and that is, you know, it's, it's in the overall plan to do approximately one hundred and fifty miles worth of trails, but the Walton Family Foundation does it in a process, and so, yes, it may, they, we may be looking at the west side at some point, but they typically, let's, let's focus on the here and now, let's get this project done, and then we can talk about that at a later time.
Right, but, so we expect at some point in time that there may be an additional thirty-five thousand dollar expenditure to cover, I'm, I'm not arguing it, I just...
Yes, fast forward four or five years from now, yes, possibly.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Tom, in speaking with some folks about this, last night at a trail appreciation builders' party that they had, I was wondering what our current maintenance cost, if they've, if they've been exceeded for the east side trails, and if this number is too low, and should we put in a thousand dollar a mile math for us? And if, and if we're currently utilizing our maintenance at the best abilities, and is some of this should be earmarked for hardware, like certain smaller motorcycles that can get back and forth on these things? And is our maintenance currently on the east side up to par with the, with the money that we earmarked for it? So we don't just replicate something that isn't working, or if we, if we need less or if we need more? I suspect we always need more, and it seems to be a lot of volunteer efforts that go into this maintenance, and how do we mitigate that or complement that with this spend?
So a couple of different things. On the east side, it was originally for twenty-five thousand dollars, and after the first year, we realized that twenty-five was not enough. Now, it's actually, the city is actually physically doing the work. We do some of the work, but typically, the work that, that we do is we outsource it to someone that's going to remove a tree or haul a tree away, something to that nature. The city's actually taking on the, the, actually, the work of it. The conversations that I've had with, with Kay from the city, and with Aaron is, Aaron from Northwest Trail, Northwest Arkansas Trailblazers, is as, as the mileage is, mileage increases, we need to make sure that we get more, you know, get more synergy in bringing that cost per mile down. So I think the city of Bentonville has put in a request from the Walton Family Foundation to get a motorcycle that would have a rig on the, a spray rig on the back. They're experimenting with that. We're very interested. I've spoken with the mayor about the city also putting in a request to get a bike with a spray rig, but they want to see how it works at Bentonville. But I, I think we need to get more cost-efficient as we go along. With that being said, if it, if it's not thirty-five thousand, it turns into forty thousand, we had a conversation between the board, giving that approval to increase it, and then we had a conversation with the city, and we amended our agreement to take it from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand, because we determined that was the amount of money. So that was necessary to maintain the trail. So I, you know, remember, it's about, you know, so we're doing seventy thousand for the east side right now. If seventy thousand proves to be too little, we may have to go back to the city and say, look, we all, we both need to chip in five or ten more to, to make it. And the city's been very cooperative and so forth. We want to make sure that if the foundation puts in seven million dollars for these trails, we don't let it go to nature.
Yeah, it seems to me that like a thousand dollar a mile math would be easier to wrap our heads around versus thirty-five to twenty-five for an undisclosed amount of mileage. I don't know how they're figuring, you know, a per-mile maintenance cost, but that at least feels like harnessable math.
Right. Well, and what we're committed to and what we actually put in our P O A budget could be different. This is a minimum commitment. The first year, we actually exceeded our budget, because we put, put in twenty-five thousand dollars, and we blew through the twenty-five thousand dollars fairly quickly, and we realized that that was not sufficient. So we exceeded our budget. So what, this is the minimum, what we put in our budget, we may decide, but we do want to make sure that the city and the P O A are splitting the cost equally, and that one party is not bearing a larger burden than the other one. We're in a partnership, we need to make sure we both carry the weight.
But from a budgeting perspective, how many miles, if we took the, the number of miles there are on the east side, the miles of trail that are on the east side, and looked at our total expenditures of seventy thousand dollars, and determined that, that that amount of money was sufficient to cover the mileage, it was not, it was neither too great nor too small. But then we could take that number of miles and use the, the expenses to date as a, as a factor in determining the additional cost for those trails that are going to be added through the central portion, so that if the number of miles on that central portion trail exceeds the number of miles on the east side, that we would know that we should, we might expect, we could pretty, almost predict that there would be additional maintenance costs, and it would allow us to do a more calculated budgeting process.
So at the end of the day, I know that Joan, Aaron, and Kay, so Joan on our team, Aaron from the Trailblazers, and Kay from the city, are all happy with this number. And this number came from them. And they're on the, they're the experts, boots on the ground. So if they feel that this is a good number, why am I to question them?
How many miles are going to be on the west side?
On the central portion? They said between forty-five and fifty. Remember when they put in the plans that it's not an exact science, you know, when you're, when you're working off of a map, that's one thing, but when they actually get there and they're routing it, they often will have to, to adjust the trail based upon, you know, the terrain, or maybe they're getting, maybe they're working with a homeowner to get the trail further away or closer to, depending upon the desires of the homeowner. So they might adjust that trail as they're going along. And so it could, it could be fifty miles, it could be forty-five miles. They think it's more towards forty-five miles, but until it's done, and until it's mapped out, then that's when we'll determine how, how far it is.
I don't think we need to get too hung up on that dollar figure, realizing that a couple of rainstorms can change that overnight, and we've got to be able to adjust and, and know that those things are a possibility to hit us right in the face.
Absolutely. And the rainstorms, the slides have not, we've only had a handful of slides, it's, it's more the down trees that, that seem to be the problem, and seem to be the cost generator is the, is the down trees during a windstorm or something to that nature. That, that seems to be more so. I think there was only one or two slides so far on the back forty, if my memory is correct.
Yeah, you go ahead and you put a number in your budget, you go with it, and you adjust it when nature happens.
But the fact that they put in forty miles worth of trails and had a handful of slides tells me that they're doing the job right.
Yeah. Who's the, who is the one tied to the details of the stakeout and layout on our part? Joan?
Joan, so Joan is the P O A's direct representative, and she's on the board of the Trailblazers, and she, she, she lives and breathes this stuff.
Okay, now, assuming concurrence by us and the city regarding the agreement, and I'm assuming that our part next week, but the existing at-grade flashing lights, who maintains those? Who owns those?
Those, I'm fairly certain that's the city.
Okay, and in some cases here, we'll have tunnel crossings, and that would go under public right-of-way, but it'd probably also touch common property, so I guess my point is the city and us would own those assets for repair, long-term?
This, this city, that would be the city's responsibility, that's the road right-of-way, city, yeah.
Road right-of-way, okay.
So that would become ours.
Because as we've all noticed with the Razorback Greenway, the, when the tunnels are constructed, they're done very, very correctly, with lighting and drainage repairs and everything, so, but they do get flooded on occasion too, on the Greenway. Okay.
For the property taxes, we make a couple.
So we can, we can keep this as, as long as we want in our hip pockets, but, but I, but I would, I would say that they should be allowed the opportunity to review the status, even if it's no change. Boom, move on.
You can, I would say you can choose to put that in there, if you want to.
If I may go back to the April twenty-seventh board strategy, this basically concurs with that. What it said in strategy three, if I remember, was what we are committed to doing is a demand study by a outside consultant to determine whether or not any additional studies like this are warranted at this time for Kingswood or for Arkmo as a, as a comparison. And it, and now that we have this demand study, I would basically personally say that we're not at that point, because of the demand study kind of proves that we're not growing golf, we don't need more golf courses, so, but it said it clearly at that time, it didn't say we were going to pursue, it said we were going to first do this demand study, and as some of you have started to read the hundred and twenty-five pages, and you're finding, we sure don't need more golf courses in total numbers, so I think this concurs with that.
Right, and if, at some point in the future, if it became an active project, if you will, then, you know, you can put it into the portfolio if you choose.
And do you, what's your thought, Tom, as far as us starting to develop an action from these recommendations? Any, anything imminent, or on our part?
The action as in...
Whether we agree with some of them or all of them, or none of them?
Yeah, and I would say that we would want to either, the board approves as, as it is written, or with modifications, but I would envision that at the, what we had talked about is at the next meeting, the board would vote to approve a going-forward strategy, because right now, you know, what we don't want to do is we don't want to have these public meetings, get input from the community, have the task force push this together, and if the board doesn't sanction the work, even if it's amended, then, you know, I'm concerned that we, we go backwards in that people will read that non-action as not, not agreeing with it. I think that the team has done, the task force has done a good job in getting input from the community and allaying a lot of the concerns that were in the community, and so if we were to sit on this too long, I think that, that the gain that we have, that they have brought to us would be lost.
Right, and on this, you know, these are fine, these are like, some of these are really fine points, right? Because, for example, in the board recommendation, the fate of Kingswood was left pretty vague. I mean, you had to infer that it was going to be open, right? And that's what caused a lot of the heartburn for people, as opposed to explicitly saying it's going to be open for the foreseeable future. Arkmo, again, was, had additional studies that were there. And Country Club, this is really in concurrence with the direction the board was going anyway, to have Country Club be the first priority as far as mitigating flood damage, so that we can keep Country Club open as long as we can, because we've done a lot of investment in the building, and that's kind of the, the main place, right? Yeah.
I, I pose this as, is there any, would there be any consideration given when the time comes to start flood mitigation at Country Club, to do it in such a manner that we could keep part of the course open? Because we're having a hell of a problem right now with, with just the courses we have in satisfying everybody's tee-time needs and requests, and what do you guys, what do you guys think about that?
Bruce, let me jump in here. When we've been talking with, and I think we'll get a little bit further on this when we talk about the architects, we're being interviewed to do that study. It's going to take twelve to eighteen months before we can probably start any work at all on the Country Club. It'll take that long to get permits to do that flood protection, and it'll take us that long to get a plan together. By that time, obviously, Scottsdale will be open, so we're back there. We still wouldn't want to close it down completely, so we're talking about the possibility of maybe doing nine holes at a time, depend upon the extent of the work that's going to be done, because we still really don't know how much that's going to be. We're looking for ideas from this golf course architect to tell us what would work in conjunction with the flood study. So we really don't, don't know the answer to those questions. I don't think anything's going to happen for, it'll probably be eighteen months before we can even think about doing any work.
Yeah, it would certainly be awesome if we could have a year where all the courses are open, because, you know, I kind of feel sorry for Phillip in some ways. Yeah, we're asking him to grow revenue, and yet we take away, you know, and for good reason, the, really, the flexibility to do that, because we don't have much avail, and we don't have available tee times in the morning to speak of, to, for more casual golfers, so.
Susan, I have a question. You said early on that, that the task force, the committee would be three from the golf committee, three from the rec committee, because you wanted it to be balanced. Don't you think that the three from the golf committee are going to be absolutely, positively in favor of golf, no matter what?
Uh, no, I don't, because it, it depends on what happens, right? I mean, if, we're hoping that the people on the golf committee also have a sense of fiscal responsibility, right? Because at some point, we don't have unlimited funds, and that really starts becoming a factor, is...
Do you think then that these six people would be more rational, if you want to put it that way, or unbiased than the board members?
No, but I think they serve a different role, okay? That it, sometimes it's easier for committees to get public input that's more non-biased, and we can do it before you have to make a decision. Because the problem is, when you guys start talking about it, right, it's usually a pretty quick path from the topic being open until a decision is made, right? And there is often not much time for public input, and I think this helps at least encourage people to speak up, good, bad, or indifferent, right? And if nothing else, it helps to present the problem out to the community before a decision's made.
You don't think that draws out the process even more, having a, a committee out here between the community and the board, and the board is ultimately tasked with making the decision?
Well, I think, there are two situations. One is if there's no trigger event, and so then the time isn't that much of a factor, right? Because you aren't deciding anything anyway. The other thing is if there is a trigger event, the urgency of the event, I mean, there may be a decision point then, because you can't play golf, right? So the course is, is closed anyway, right? So if it's four weeks or six weeks, I'm not sure it makes that much difference.
Yeah, I mean, with the information that we've developed, the study that we've completed, the information that we're gathering from two consecutive summers of having four and a half golf courses, I think we've got some, a pretty good basis, you know, to make decisions going forth. Like you say, it'd be nice to have a summer where we had our golf courses open. We promised that for this year, Mother Nature did it to us again.
Well, and part of the reason...
So we really don't, what my point is, we're going to have two consecutive summers of four and a half golf courses.
Actually, three.
And with numbers that we have confidence in for rounds. If we can get a summer where we can have everything open, we'll have some kind of a comparison, and what it really boils down to is the number of rounds. That, that's what's going to determine what happens in the future, where we go, what we need to do to, to use...
we need to do to serve the membership, so...
Well, I kind of disagree necessarily that that's the only factor. But it goes back to the same point about whether you, first of all, have confidence in the committees to be able to do their work and provide meaningful, or recommendations on meaningful topics. I mean, I like to provide recommendations on things like cur tags, but I would rather focus on, you know, the main decisions, right? And I'm sure recreation feels the same way. And to be able to do it before you make the decisions.
Jerry, I applaud the committee and the task force for their work, because I believe that it's a very bipartisan group to put these two recommendations together. And I would definitely vote for them. I do have one concern though, and it was stated in the first look, that we would do nothing for mitigation on Woodswood and Kingsdale. I have a deep concern for the resource, the stream banks and so on. And if we do nothing, it's basically saying we're giving, then give up and give in to nature, which we can do some things. And I would hope that part of the new task force that may be developed looks at that end of it as well, and what can we do to begin mitigating and reducing some of the damages that are caused by the flooding.
I think it's a great idea, and I think that should be within the scope of the task force, you know, especially looking at Kingswood, or yeah, Kingswood and Brooksdale. You know, and I know that the golf, for example, golf mains is already doing quite a bit of what they can without permitting to help mitigate some of the things around, that are happening at Brooksdale now. So, and they're just little things, but they make a difference.
Let's, we'll move on in a minute, but I concur with Jerry's comment. I think it was admirable of the board and the task force to get started, and I commend you and Bill and that group for your efforts. And we were able to give you time to come up with recommendations instead of as quickly as some of the emergency happenings in the past.
Yeah.
Or results of hydrology studies or other things. Now, there are some parallel events going on that would reflect how we would react to this two-page proposal. One, I mentioned we got a demand study just completed, and we want to digest that as the board. We're also in the process of hiring a country club architect, and then he will help our hydrologist in determining estimated costs, hopefully by October or sometime later this year. That'll have a factor in our position on the country club improvements. I think we're all committed to doing it because we want to save the country club period. Also, as David Bernberg mentioned, the number of rounds is a factor because even this year, halfway through the year, we're down again. And maybe you can say it's Scottsdale closing, but what it really is, is a horrible winter we had and, you know, horrible hot summer that affected the rounds of the first half of the year. So some of these parallel events are going on that'll, in my opinion, affect how we decide to act on these proposals too. But I commend, commend your group for the formation of it.
And I would suggest that those things that you're talking about are inputs into whatever the process is that is used. And I would rather not ever have a golf emergency. There are, it's rare that you should have a golf emergency, if you think about, right? I mean...
As we said, all spring in the public meetings, the valley's going to flood. It's already flooded twice this year, February, late February, March, and it got out of the banks, but it wasn't, those weren't even considered one-year floods. But it did get out of the banks, so floods are imminent, as that study proved. So anyway, thank you very much. Country Club Architect Search is underway.
So the last time we spoke, we talked about how we narrowed the group from the five that submitted their RFQ, the qualifications. We developed an RFP for proposals, and that was sent out to three. And in that RFP is the requirement they come out and interview with the group. And so we're sitting down with Staples Golf on 7/26, Colgan on 8/1, and Lester George on 8/9. And they will tour the golf facility also at the same time. Some of these gentlemen have already been on site, but they will be coming back. And their, their RFP must be submitted by 8/15. So we're progressing nicely so far.
And hopefully then at the board meeting in August, we can pick one of the consultants. Now, Pat's question last month was, we made the three proposals, and these people will submit proposals, they've already indicated that. So we didn't really stay with the five that we had discussed in the previous board meeting.
They're coming out on their own dime, so there's no way they would come out on their own dime without submitting an RFP. Any questions on that? Moving on to the next one on page 24 and 25. What I, what we've done is give you a memo from the charitable giving committee, and they will be in attendance at next week's meeting to discuss this recommendation. Also, since we have a number of new board members, I included the policy on page 25 regarding charitable giving. And so this is a second year of this committee, and they, what they do is they make sure that all the proposals come in at the exact same time. We publicized it through the newsletter. I think last year we only received three or four requests for funding, and this year we received, what's that, six? And so they sat down, now they have a detailed documentation that each committee, each charity must submit. And the committee went through each of those proposals or grant requests and made their decision based upon the merits of their requests. With regards to the log cabin, courtesy van, and the foundation, that, those numbers, the 3,000 for the log cabin, the courtesy van for 3,500, and the foundation of 1,000, those were what those charities asked for specifically. The other ones, the library, the animal shelter, and the Boys and Girls Club, all their proposals were greater than that. So effectively what they did was they took the remainder of the $24,000, divided it equally, and that's how they wound up with the 5,500. I mentioned on the bottom here that all grants comply with Policy 1.03.6, specifically that it's in section one or duties, Roman numeral two, section one, A, B, and C, which states that it must be a nonprofit. They must have a storefront in Bella Vista. It cannot be for a political party or a religious affiliation, and the donation cannot be more than $10,000. And all those, you know, these requests all comply with all that. The storefront requirement specifically is, you know, the Cancer Society is fantastic, but they don't have a storefront in Bella Vista. There's so many charities, we want to make sure that we take care of a local, take care of local organizations.
I've got a couple of questions, Tom. I'm not real familiar who operates the courtesy van, but I was thinking, is there any way that we help them get one donated versus, I guess this is to purchase a used van, or if this is for maintenance, I'm not quite sure. But it definitely seems like there's a number of car lots around.
That wasn't for a van, that, the courtesy, that's a, I wish the committee members were here because I can't remember, but it was not, that wasn't for a van. It was, it was something related to their overall operation, I think. JB drives for courtesy?
I've done that.
You've done it, that's who.
No, but I, I know they're currently asking for a volunteer for two days a month, so they're, they're lacking two days as far as volunteering.
What I mean is, could you describe a little bit more what they do?
Well, they, well, they get requests, they get requests from persons within the community who cannot drive or do not drive. And those people need to go to things such as doctor's appointments or other, other sorts of health-related activities. In some cases, they are women who would like to go to the beauty shop, okay? In the past, what we've done is taken people into Benneville, and now it's limited to, for those types of calls, just to the, the shops within Bella Vista. In some cases, they want to go to Walmart, they need somebody to take them shopping and then help them with the groceries when they get home and things like that. But it's done by request. And then what happens is volunteer drivers go to the office on the day that they have volunteered for. By the way, all of those volunteer drivers work into the afternoon. They start in the morning before eight o'clock and work many times in the afternoon, sometimes late in the afternoon. And then they will take, there will be a routing, they'll have the number of clients that they're going to be taking to the locations. They will be separated from, normally there are two drivers per day, but they'll be separated into two groups by geographic locations, pickup locations primarily. So they go to the homes and, and give assistance to the clients who come to the van. In some cases, they're on wheelchairs, so they have the capacity of doing that, helping people who are wheelchair bound. They go to the, there's a, I don't know what it's called, up in, up at, by the Highlands Gates.
Village House.
Pardon?
Village House.
Village House. And they take clients to the Village House to spend a day there. But that's all done by volunteer, they have a scheduler who goes in and processes all of the calls that have come in and puts them on the calendar. So that's, it's, it's all a volunteer operation. And it provides a really good service, a wonderful service for people who, again, cannot drive or do not drive or can't, don't have driver's license or whatever.
A question, it is being used for a van purchase, but that's not the total purchase, that's not the total price of the van?
For the new members of the board, we implemented this policy a year and a half ago. We didn't have a charitable giving committee at the time, and we requested people to apply to be on it with the specific goal of saying, here's a total amount that the board and the community would like to give to charities on an annual basis. And it's worked very well. But it also states in the policy, this keeps our bias out of it. They're independent of it as much as possible, other than we approve the total money. So I would, you know, personally, I could say, well, I'd rather spend money here or there, but it keeps our biases away from this process, which I think is a good, good Anything else on this matter?
For community events, the services that the PLA provides, that's up to you, Tom.
Yeah, that's, we have that in a separate budget line, I think.
Is there a formal way for those organizations to request services from the PLA or just?
They usually just call me and we talk about it. And another benefit of the charitable giving committee, in addition to what Jim had referenced, we get a lot of requests, a lot, all the time. And this allows us to point, hey, you got to go to the charitable giving committee, we can't give you, you know, because they want gift certificates to the restaurant and so forth. And we, we have a policy in place that we can't give cash and gift certificates are cash. And so it helps not only the board, it helps the staff because of the volume of requests that we see, that we receive on an annual daily basis.
How is this number determined or percentageed out? Is it from a, from a certain earnings pool or?
Well, we came up with, last year in the formation of the charitable giving committee, the board discussed a dollar amount that they felt that they were comfortable with. And they came up with $24,000, $25,000. And so we just replicated it for, for a year or two. We discussed it at the budget approval meeting, and the board was fine with replicating the same dollar amount. So it was, the amount that the board felt comfortable with. Not the most scientific way of getting to it, but it's what they felt was comfortable.
And I guess we received some tax benefit?
We don't pay taxes because of...
Because of our status?
Because of our status. We could potentially, Dwayne will jump in and yell at me if I get this one wrong, but we don't get any benefit, there's no tax benefit to, to us by making these donations.
Come on, Dwayne, jump in. Okay, let's, let's move on if we need, and we will act on this next week.
Yes, and we will have...
David, go ahead, Tom.
Two individuals.
Do you have any idea how many passengers are transported in a normal week by the two vans?
Well, just as a guess, David, I would say perhaps a dozen a day.
A day?
Yeah, something like that. Because what will happen is you'll have people doing things at certain times, they'll have appointments at various times. So what we can do is you can schedule taking somebody to an appointment and then leaving, going to somebody else, or you can take two people at a time. In many cases though, you'll have, you'll have to take them to an appointment and then wait, because the appointment is not so long that by, by the time you got back to get another client, they'd be sitting there waiting for, you know, hours before you...
The scheduler is a pretty important person.
Yes, yes. And Jane Barfield is the, I wouldn't say primary scheduler, but works quite a bit over there doing the scheduling.
So they probably run the wheels off of these vans?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they do, they do. And like Jane will go in at 6:30 in the morning to get the scheduling for the day worked out. And what will happen is these people call in to the office and leave a message, and they'll say, my name is so-and-so, I live at such-and-such, and, and I need to do this, okay? And then the scheduler will contact the people to confirm all of the information. It's, it's a pretty neat operation, and it really provides a wonderful service.
Okay, we'll move on to item seven, open forum. Are there any comments from the community? I don't, this is a little more informal than our regular meeting next Thursday night, so Linda, we know all of you, so go ahead if you have any comments.
I just want to mention regarding the trail easement, city council did discuss that at our work session on Monday. And however, we were under the impression that it did not entail an additional $35,000 commitment. And there are some city council people who feel it brings people and no revenue, but I will make sure that at Monday's meeting, we were going to vote this Monday, not in August, that, that gets clarified.
Yeah, it's, it is 35 for the back 40 and 35 for the central.
Right, that question was brought up, and neither the mayor nor Kay were at the meeting on Monday, so I'll make sure we get that clarified for next Monday. And hopefully the council member who would likely vote no will, we can outvote him.
And I, I received, I texted Joan while we were in the meeting, and she said that she felt that it would increase usage by about 50%, and that is a, just an out-and-out guess. But she knows that once you move the trail into a closer area, that people in that neighborhood will hike more, will bike more, and it'll also start spreading out. But that, that... But that's, I, I wouldn't put any money on that guesstimate.
I know, there was some opposition last time when we changed it from 25 to 35. But I'm a trail person, so I'll speak to that Monday. Regarding courtesy van, like, a year or two ago, when United Way decided to no longer support senior activities and just juvenile activities, courtesy van lost a lot of funding. So they urgently need assistance, so I appreciate that. And as to the museum cabin project, I appreciate that. There's bunches of us that have made personal donations, and also been out there picking up trash, cleaning out the cabin, hauling garbage to the dump that was in the cabin, preparing the cabin to be moved. We do have the inmates from the jail who are going to be building the foundation. That's the only reason it hasn't been moved yet, because their construction projects are tied up until September. So they'll be building the foundation, and then the museum will be moving the cabin as soon as the foundation's in. So thank you for that.
Linda, thank you. Anybody else today? All right, moving to item eight, announcements. Um, one announcement that's not on this agenda, but it does relate to our budgeting process, which is underway. The financial task force is about to have their last meeting shortly in August, I think the sixth, is it, or the third, sixth? It's not on here, but some of you may want to attend it. I think it's at 3:00 PM on the sixth, is it, Tom? I can't remember, but...
It's...
What is it?
It is, it is the seventh. It originally was scheduled for the sixth, but we had to move it to the seventh.
Okay, because that, that's helping all of our departments in starting their budget process too. And it'll be a basis for recommendations from the task force, financial group, who's been studying this for quite a while, to submit recommendations to the staff and management, and then the board later, as we get prepared to act in late November, but...
Is it still at 3:00 on the Sunday?
Yes, in the boardroom.
And then the proposed community center, community feedback meetings, there'll be one held on Monday, July 23 at 6:00 PM at Reardon Hall. And then again, Tuesday, July 24 at 8:00 AM at Reardon Hall. And this will be to submit a conceptual plan that's been developed by the architectural firm that was selected, and in consultation with a, a study group and a screening committee and task forces that looked into it, and some survey results as well. Those meetings will be held at that time. And then the board of directors' regular meeting will be held next Thursday night, the 26th, at 6:30 PM in the boardroom. Adjourned. Thank you.